The pledge of allegiance, please rise. Next item on the agenda is approval of agenda and emotion to approve. Motion by Mr. Collins. Second by Mrs. Rogalski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes four to zero. So, we do have a bare minimum skeleton crew tonight on the school committee due to illnesses. We wish Mr. Fiorello and Mrs. Feather and Mr. Demonicke all well. Stay safe, everyone. The next item on the agenda is the student government report.
Good evening, my name is Maddie Essies and I am the Student Government Vice President. For a little recap of November, our annual and extremely successful event of the canned food drive took place. In-school, over eighteen hundred cans were donated, as well as over fifteen hundred dollars. Then, the weekend after the in-school drive, we were at Ciabra where we filled a semi-truck with donations from the town. This truck was delivered by us to the monastery for the Happy Basket Program. We resorted and boxed the donations. The event was by far more successful than the years past and made a huge difference for Thanksgivings within the community. It was great to see our community so strong and really show up for this event. We have a lot of plans that will be going on throughout the month of December, our biggest being Adopt a Family. While in the past, we have adopted just under ten families, this year, we have thirty-one families total. Twenty-six from the Adopt a Family Program and five from the DCYF. At our past meeting, student gov members, advisors, peers, and teachers were able to select what they were able to bring, and as of this afternoon, almost every gift has been claimed to be purchased. These gifts will be in by Wednesday, December fourteenth, where we will do our annual scavenger hunt and wrap them afterwards. At our scavenger hunt, we're broken off into groups and given tasks by our advisors to complete around town. These tasks vary, but one of the most notable is finding Mayor Mutter and recording ourselves singing a Christmas song with him. Once each group is done, they head back to the school for a little holiday party and wrap the gifts for the Adopt a Family and DCYF programs. We have also reached out to the previous class officers of two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-two to join us. Having alumni at the party will be extremely exciting and special. A lasting tradition we have had since last year is Staff Member of the Week, where student gov members vote for a teacher they feel deserves to be recognized for their hard work, connections with students, and going above and beyond in and outside of the classroom. This past week, Mr. Carpenter was our Staff Member of the Week, as he's a clear-cut example of these traits. The week prior was Mr. Hen. We are extremely thankful for such amazing staff and enjoy recognizing them weekly. Looking forward into January, our winter ball dance will be back for the first time since COVID. Students are extremely excited to have the stands back. It will be held at Wright Sterry Farm on January twentieth. As busy as we have been, this year is off to a fantastic start, and we look forward to seeing what two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three brings. Thank you.
Thank you, I have a question. What was the date for the scavenger hunt again?
It will be December fourteenth.
December fourteenth, so Mayor Mutter, please make sure you're around, in the office maybe that day. And the alumni party was what date?
It's, they'll be at the party afterwards.
Oh, the same day, December fourteenth?
Yep.
Uh, my alumni won't be home yet. No, she will be home, she's coming home Tuesday. Okay, all right, I'll let her know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the, uh, the next item on the agenda is the organizational meeting. So, when we switched to four-year terms, when we were elected in two thousand twenty, one of the changes in our policy was that, at the end of two terms, we would have an organizational meeting and decide if we wanted to switch any of the positions within the school committee. Uh, we did table this last time because we had some people out. And today, since we are even on more of a skeleton crew, we have, we are thinking about tabling this again this time. Um, so it's the pleasure of the committee of what we should do next.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to, uh, table, uh, the vote until the, uh, first meeting of January.
And Mr. Collins makes a motion to table it to our next meeting. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that passes four to zero, so we will be tabling that. I think I did that right, Mr. Adams. I think I did that right, okay, thanks. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. It includes approval of minutes from the regular meeting eleven-ten, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, we do not have the minutes from the special meeting eleven-twenty-one, twenty-two, so we're gonna take that, um, that, take that out for this meeting. It includes approval of minutes from the executive session eleven-ten, two thousand twenty-two, the enrollment report twelve-one, two thousand twenty-two, the school police report eleven-one, two thousand twenty-two, the school bus inspection reports twelve-one, two thousand twenty-two, and the residency tourantry report twelve-one, two thousand twenty-two. So, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the special meeting from eleven-twenty-one, twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to approve. Second by Ms. Smith, all in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes four to zero. The next item on the agenda is personnel announcements. Mrs. Dunkinson?
Good evening. I have a few items for you tonight and a lot of coaching appointments. So, first up, two appointments, effective November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, Adam Grantham Coogan, Special Educator ALP at Cumberland High School, one year only. And second, effective January third, two thousand twenty-three, Bethany Goldberg, School Nurse Teacher, Cumberland Hill. I have one resignation, effective December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Sean Connolly, Social Studies at Cumberland High School. And the coaching appointments, I will list them all. Uh, first, uh, they're all for the, uh, winter season. Mark Andre Inzoni, Hockey Varsity, Tyler Calabro, Basketball Boys JV, Terry Carpenter, Indoor Track and Field Assistant, Silas Copeland, Indoor Track and Field Assistant, Caroline Fromon, Swimming Boys and Girls Assistant, Richard Gudrow, Indoor Track and Field Assistant, Stephen Gorman, Wrestling Assistant, Owen Keenan, Basketball Girls Varsity, Christopher LeBlanc, Basketball Girls Junior Varsity, Josh Lima, Indoor Track and Field Head Coach, Roderick McGarry, Swimming Boys, Girls, Josh, Jonathan Paquin, Hockey Assistant, Rachel Powell, Cheerleading, Gary Reedy, Basketball Boys Varsity, Colin Smith, Wrestling Varsity, Adam Grantham Coogan, Indoor Track and Field Assistant, Sean Barlow, Basketball Boys McCourt, Brendan Collins, Basketball Girls, North Cumberland Middle School, Jared Dean, Wrestling, North Cumberland Middle School, Brady Gillis, Wrestling McCourt, Sean London, Basketball Girls McCourt, and John Madden, Basketball Boys, North Cumberland Middle School. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunkinson. Next on the agenda is Report Out of Executive Session Meeting. Uh, Report Out of Executive Session Meeting on twelve-eight, two thousand twenty-two, Report Out of Executive Session Votes. We did not take any votes in executive session. Next item is a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. I need a motion to seal the minutes.
Motion to seal.
Motion by Mrs. Rogalski. Second by Mr. Collins, all in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes four to zero. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Thornton?
Madam Chair, good evening. We have some recognitions to start things off. I'd first like to call up, uh, Principal Vaughn from Community School for our first recognition. So, our first recognition, we have a very special young man from Community, Community School. I'd like to call up Beckett Cameron. Beckett, come on up. Beckett, you could stand right here with me while Ms. Vaughn talks about what happened and why you're here today.
Thank you very much. Um, it's a pleasure to welcome Beckett. Beckett is an outstanding student and a very kind and caring young man. On November twenty-first, Beckett was awarded, um, a special prize from the Feinstein Foundation. He had the winning golden ticket, you wanna show everyone? So, this award came with a five thousand dollar grant to Community School, as well as a thousand dollars, um, an additional grant that Beckett has chosen to present to the Northern Rhode Island Food Pantry. Along with that, Mr. Feinstein has sent some special gifts for you. So, congratulations. It couldn't have happened to a better student and a, a very kind and caring young man. Congratulations.
And next up, uh, if I could call up, uh, Ms. Marble, I believe, for our next award. Inteam? Inteam? Yep. All right. So, each year, we have the pleasure to give out the District Education Support Professional of the Year, and this year, it comes from Ashton Elementary. So, um, if I could, um, call up Kelly McPherson.
All right, we, so, good evening, uh, School Committee and, uh, fellow public members. We would just like to say a few words about our lovely school secretary who we love dearly. And, um, we are a family at Ashton, so we did bring another friend with us to kind of talk about Ms. McPherson together, okay? So, it gives us a great pleasure to congratulate Kelly McPherson as the District Support Professional of the Year for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Yay, Kelly, we love you! So, Kelly is in her second year of being our school secretary at Ashton, um, and in the Cumberland preschool industry, she has two jobs, she is Ashton and the Cumberland Pre-School. So, prior to working at Ashton, Kelly was a paraprofessional mainly at Cumberland Hill and also at North Cumberland Middle School. She also has spent time at BF Norton and McCourt Middle School.
Kelly's done a great job learning her duties as Secretary of two schools, Ashton and our preschool. On a daily basis, Kelly deals with three arrivals and three dismissals of students, unlike other schools that only have one. Kelly's great at multitasking and deals with pressure well. She's very friendly, caring, and efficient on the job.
Kelly always has a positive attitude. Whenever you walk in the office, you always see that lovely smile that she's having right now on her face. Right? So, and she always helps to go above and beyond her duties. This year, Kelly is working additional time to cover the preschool hours, as Ashton and preschool have different hours, so she stays beyond her time to do that. She is also the president of ICSI Union and does well balancing her responsibilities between being a secretary and also being president of the ICSI Union.
She's approachable and relates well to people. She's very good at assisting students when they come into the office looking for support. Kelly is also resourceful and will reach out to others when she has questions or does not know how to do something. Other secretaries will seek her out for support as well.
Kelly is an extremely active member of our school community. She participates in spirit weeks and community events when possible. She also supports the PTO, helping to make copies and getting the agendas out to the parents. Kelly has learned the culture of our school well and has shown a great deal of interest and compassion um, to the students and our staff and the parents. She is also a positive support to ICSI members who seek her out for contractual issues as well.
She's a great addition to our school. She takes pride in her work and has revamped many procedures in the office to make things run more efficiently. She's the first person people encounter as they enter our school, and she's always positive, cheerful, and helpful. Kelly represents our district and our school well, and we're proud of how much she has learned and accomplished in such a short time.
And we just love you, Kelly, so congratulations.
Congratulations, we are so proud of you. So, Cumberland School Department, two thousand two, District Education Support Professional of the Year, presented to Kelly McPherson in recognition of your inspirational actions and excellence in educational support. Thank you, Kelly.
And also, McPherson, uh, you're also in the Hall of Fame now, so you're on our perpetual, uh, awards in the district. So, McPherson, any, any thoughts for the, the group?
Not to, not to put you on the spot.
I would just like to thank everybody. I do love going to work every day and, um, just honored to be recognized for what I do every day. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right. Madam Chair, next slide, I believe, is yours.
Yes, uh, so, recently, Mr. Demonicke gave his notification of resigning from the school committee effective January first, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Demonicke has served on the school committee since two thousand ten. He has been a guiding light and a mentor for all of us. And due to personal and health reasons, he has had to step down, and I know that this was a difficult decision for him. But, we wanted to acknowledge him, he was not able to be here tonight, um, at, you know, at the, his last official meeting. But, I'm sure that he's watching. Um, and we just wanted to acknowledge, um, or give him our thanks and to recognize him for his commitment to the school committee, to the children of Cumberland, to the teachers and staff and the administration. He has been through a lot with this, um, district over the past twelve years and has really helped move things forward for us. He was the chair of fiscal for a long time, he's been on building committees, and so he really is leaving, has left his mark, and there will be big shoes to fill. So, before I talk about the big shoes to fill, I just want to thank, um, thank Mr. Demonicke from all of us on the school committee.
Madam Chair, if I may? Um, when I first got here over three years ago, Mr. Demonicke was an invaluable resource. He, and you know, there's a couple of things you can say about Paul. You always know what Paul's thinking. Even if you don't ask for it, Paul is as blunt as they come, and it, even if you didn't wanna hear it, Paul was as blunt as they come. And I think his commitment to students is unquestionable. There's not a decision or a vote he made where the, what was best for students wasn't the most important thing. And, uh, you know, we're gonna miss him, believe me. So, we wish you well, Paul, good health, and, uh, I'm sure once he's back on his feet, he's gonna be in here. Public comment, these meetings will last a lot longer, but we'll miss him, so, thank you.
Well, I do, um, with, with Paul stepping down in the middle of the term, I just wanted to inform everyone of what the process is for replacing, um, someone on the school committee. Paul is an at-large member of the Cumberland School Committee, so not just one district, um, across the whole town. And I'm just looking this up on the mayor's social media, so I make sure I get this right. But, the, the process is that the Cumberland Town Council actually appoints the next, the replacement, Mr. Demonicke's replacement. And so, they have asked for letters of interest, um, or, and/or resumes to be submitted to the town clerk no later than December twenty-sixth. So, if there's anyone out there ever wondering, what would it be like to make an impact on the Cumberland School District, or anyone out there who's ever wondered, hmm, maybe I could do something differently, or anyone out there who has disagreed with some of the things we've done in the past and would love to be part of the process for how we move things forward, um, we would welcome. I, I would love if there would be multiple people who would throw their hat, their hat in the ring. And if anyone has any questions about what it's like to serve on the school committee, certainly, you can reach out to anybody on the school committee, you can reach out to me. Um, our emails and our phone numbers are on the Cumberland School website. But, the submitting, uh, a letter of interest by December twenty-sixth, and then, at the January fourth Town Council meeting, is when the Town Council would vote and appoint the next member of the school committee, and that person would complete the remaining two years of this term. So, this term expires in two thousand twenty-four, right? November two thousand twenty-four. So, um, I really encourage, we've had, we have a great school committee now, and we are looking forward to welcoming somebody new. And, um, hopeful that we'll have multiple people who want to throw their hat in. So, um, December twenty-sixth, as you're getting ready for all your holidays, just add one more thing to the list, submit a letter of interest to the Town Council, to the town clerk. All right, thank you, and thank you, Paul. We hope to see you soon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, a quick update, last week in the district, we actually had a training for ALIS. That's our, our new, uh, school safety protocol, it stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, Evacuate. Here's the graduating class, it was a two-day training. It was, uh, police officers, administrators, teachers, around twenty-three of us. Actually, quite rigorous, we had lecture in the morning, we had hands-on. We actually had to teach back to our instructors what we learned with a rubric. So, we actually got pretty rigorous, pre-test, post-test. So, now, what's next? We'll be training all of our faculties from January till June. We're buying the kits that we need and rolling out our trainings over the course of the next, uh, five, six months. If you all wanna get involved in sitting in a training, it's a four-hour training, two, two-hour sessions, you're, um, welcome to join us, so, happy to have you. And as always, construction. These are, um, some large, um, drain pipes we're installing at Garvin. Funny story with this, I got a call last week from a teacher who retired. She said, one of these drain pipes is on her neighbor's front lawn. It blew across the street on, um, and was in her front lawn, so I had to roll it back, back to the Garvin construction site. But, uh, these are for the drainage system that is where the Garvin parking lot, um, used to be. So, now, if you noticed before, it was a flood a lot over at Garvin, it would run down to the ball field. That alleviates that problem, it's all been, uh, put in the ground with, um, kind of junction areas, so that's, that's in process. This is the new foundation at Garvin, that's the new cafeteria and the Da Vinci Spaces, that's all underway. Right now, in this picture, they're taking out the, um, the, the, um, framing for the foundation, that's the, so those are all being pulled away, next, they pour the floor for that, that's happening. Here, Ashton School, uh, the addition is moving along, you can see the steel is in. Next, will come the, um, kind of the, the pieces of the roof that come in, that's really exciting, that's moving along. Another view inside, it's quite the, the large space, so that's, that's moving on schedule. And Community, I know you haven't really seen much yet, Community, but now, all the, um, underground work is done, all the, uh, the plumbing, all some of the sewer work. Now, they're getting ready to actually pour the, uh, the floor here for Community. It's a ten-thousand-foot cafeteria, it's a large space, so that's moving along, another view of Community. And now, finally, Cumberland Hill, we had to wait a while for lights to come in. Sometimes things are delayed, back order through COVID and supply chain. These were lights, they're kinda unique and they kinda curve, and that's the small learning common area with our lights in. That's our large common area with our lights in, so it's great to see. As you saw last time, our cafeteria is open, we did the floor, we did the ceiling, we did the, the beams, all done. And also, attention to detail, I walked out, I said, those stairs are all kinda chipped and not looking good, let's paint those. So, I'm walking around and looking for like things to fix, to make it look, all look nice. So, it does look nice at Cumberland Hill, we think we're really there now, down to our final punch list, so that's exciting. So, now, for the main event, uh, tonight, I'm gonna turn things over to Mr. Demonicke and his team for the Rycast scores presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. All right, so, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee, and all who are in attendance for our annual Rycast results presentation. I'm joined by my colleagues, all of whom you know well by now, we're all veterans at this point, sharing our district's academic standing. Our annual Rycast data analysis provides the community with an opportunity to gauge how Cumberland's school system fares in comparison to itself and how we progress or regress as an academic institution. It also allows us to understand how our performance compares to other districts in Rhode Island in addition to some local districts in neighboring Massachusetts. This is our eighth year presenting this type of data analysis to the committee. Our office has made it its mission to approach student performance with a high degree of urgency. Yet, the additional variable of having to recover from the impact of the pandemic posed a new and greater challenge for us. The narrative you will hear tonight is a tale of two different outcomes, an ELA in math. As a result, we will attempt to share that narrative as clearly as we can. There are longstanding debates on what this data means, if anything at all. The bottom line is that the results of such assessments can either be ignored or attended to. It is my opinion that the outcomes are a mirrored reflection of who we are as a public school system. Data can sometimes be difficult to accept or understand, but it remains a concrete way to objectively measure who we are. Rycast on the service level, surface level may just be a data point, though I choose to think about it more deeply. Outcomes are about what you get, processes are about what you do, identity is about what you believe, and all three are interrelated and share a dependency. If you were to visit our office on any given day, you would see evidence of us reimagining our identity and refining our processes all for the purposes of maximizing outcomes. And so, with that, we'll, we'll start our presentation, Dr. Thornton. So, I'll introduce everybody really quickly, again, Kathy Cardoza, who has been with the office. I think this is your seventh year, Kathy. Uh, she's our Math and Science Curriculum Coordinator for the District K eight. Bethany Silva, uh, joined our team last year, she is our ELA and Social Studies Curriculum Coordinator. She replaced Deb Rude, who has also, uh, been with this office for seven years. Deb Rude has remained on as a consultant, and she'll be rounding out next year, helping us finish our elementary curriculum implementation. Uh, so she's remained on in that, in that capacity with us. Jillian Belanger, who is not here this evening, she's our, uh, MLL and Tier Three ELA Coordinator. Shannon Bissett is here with us this evening. This is your second year, Shannon, with us? Third year, third year, time goes by quick. As our math coach and Tier Three Coordinator, and then Melissa Kuzanitz, our High School Content Coordinator. Um, and she is not here this evening, and she's all grades nine through twelve. So, I'd like to remind everyone that our purpose always remains the same for seven years. Uh, the pursuit of proficiency for all Cumberland students is, is why we exist. And so, I also, each year, we like to share and remind everyone of the expectations with regard to how the scoring is. And so, five hundred is a scale score representative of students who score five hundred or above, meets expectations, or is considered grade-level proficient. The data that you'll hear this evening, or the percentages that you see, are a combination of meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. So, anything five hundred or above.
Good evening, I'm gonna share the math data for the Rycast two thousand twenty-two. This visual shows you the standardized testing scores from two thousand fifteen to present. Um, you know, we started off with Park and then start, uh, transitioned over to Rycast, and you'll see that two thousand twenty isn't there due to the pandemic year. Um, we had a big increase in ranking in two thousand eighteen, and then you saw that there was a decline with the pandemic. Um, and then we have a, our gain this year. Um, we're ranked in the top four, along with Barrington, Jamestown, and East Greenwich. And the difference from last year to this year is that we, um, surpassed Little Compton and North Kingstown. And again, this might look like we're missing some districts, but we only compare ourselves to districts that test from grades three to eight. So, that, that's those districts. So, this shows just this year. This shows our proficiency compared to other districts for two thousand twenty-two. Again, all districts that assess grades three to eight. This year, fifty-three point two, which is an increase of twelve percentage points, um, since last year. And it's still close, but two percentage points lower than two thousand and nineteen, pre-pandemic. So, you can see, we're up there with, you know, the top-performing districts, uh, Cumberland being fourth. All right, so we showed you our proficiency compared to other districts. This bar graph tracks progress over time. This graph shows just Cumberland's score since two thousand fifteen. Two thousand fifteen to seventeen, like I said, is Park, and two thousand eighteen to twenty-two is Rycast. And if you follow the trend from left to right, you can see that it's upwards until two thousand nineteen. We didn't test in two thousand twenty, and then we're moving upwards again. We took a dip in two thousand twenty-one, and we're moving upwards again. So, this is again, just Cumberland's journey over the past seven years. So, this is, uh, a slide we have shared, but in the past, we've also shared data about economically disadvantaged populations and free and reduced lunch. However, Rhode Island doesn't have accurate data at this time, because everyone has gotten free and reduced lunch over the past couple of years. So, this is a comparison of districts that test over fifteen hundred students. Cumberland is considered a large district comparatively. So, you can see, when you compare to the larger districts, um, Cumberland in math is, would be number two after Barrington at fifty-three point two percent proficiency. You can see, we test over two thousand students. Um, so that's why, this is just a little different way of comparing, because we don't have that economically disadvantaged, accurate data this year.
So, Kathy, why would school size matter? Like, say, a small school, like Little Compton versus, say, NK or Cumberland, why does that matter?
Gee, Tony has a nice slide about that.
So, Bethany and I are gonna follow the same slides, but we're gonna look at ELA. Uh, you've seen this slide before. As Kathy said, it tracks our standardized scores from two thousand fifteen to the present as compared to other public districts. Same as in math. Same as in math, we had a big increase in 18 and 19. In ELA, we took a significant dip after the pandemic, and we were ranking 11th. This year, we've increased our ranking to eighth, and we've outperformed Smithfield, Portsmouth, and SK.
So this slide shows the 2021 and the 2022 proficiency in ELA. As Deb mentioned, we rank eighth, and our ranking represents 50.5% proficiency in ELA. You'll notice that our proficiency last year was 51.5, so when you look at that, you might say, yes, we went backwards a little bit in ELA in terms of our proficiency, but when you compare us to other districts, we went up in rank from 11th to eighth, as Deb mentioned. If you take a look out of the top 10 districts, eight lost ground in ELA, we weren't the only ones that lost a little bit of ground. Out of those 10, six districts lost more ground in Cumberland, if you take a look at their 2021 and 2022 proficiency scores. In the top 10, there are three districts that test fewer than 500 students, and Tony will talk to you about why population size does matter. In the top 10 districts, we are the only one who tests over 2,000 students. The next closest is Barrington, but they test 530 fewer students than Cumberland does.
Again, our journey over seven years represented by percent proficient. So you can see in 2015, when it was a Park year, we were performing at 42% proficiency, and if you move to the 21-22 year, I think Bethany mentioned it, although our ranking is higher this year, we're eighth out of 11th, our proficiency decreased by one point.
This slide is like Kathy's math slide. We compared ourselves to other districts that test 1,500 or more students in grades three through eight. Cumberland is, tests a large population of students, so when we compared ourselves to the top 12 districts who test 1,500 or more, we score, or we rank third.
So at this point, when we look at our data, we always ask ourselves the same questions, high-level questions on things to consider and what our data is telling us, and we quite simply look at our strengths, our weaknesses, opportunities that we have, and thrust really just means things that we see that need immediate change. So once we sort that out, we come up with responses to either what we're actively doing in the district currently, or that we plan to do.
Okay, so I'll start off with responses to improving student outcomes in math. So at the elementary school, we have groups of teachers that we meet with, we meet with grade-level teams from K to five, there's one representative at each school from every grade level, and when we do, we meet, we look at assessments, we do assessment revision, we look at Rycast data, benchmark assessment data. This year, we're looking at new standards-based grading. We also have a new diagnostic assessment tool called Equip, we look at the data from that, which tells us all the gaps that need to be filled. We have a math coach, Shannon, who was introduced earlier, she meets with teachers primarily at a new-to-a-grade level, new teaching or new-to-a-grade level. The next thing I already talked about, the Equip is a platform that we purchased post-pandemic. This year was a big focus on kindergarten, going to observational assessments instead of all the paper-based assessments. Middle school, it's the big year, we're implementing brand-new curriculum from six to eight, that includes a Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three component. Tier One is reveal math, which is a high-quality curriculum material, that's also being implemented next year at the high school, so we'll be aligned in math from six to 12. We're doing assessment revision right now, so I meet frequently with five different, sorry, grade six, grade seven, grade eight, accelerated seven, and algebra teachers to work on assessment revision. And the Tier One, the Tier Two program is called the Arrive Math Booster, and the Essentials teachers utilize that curriculum as well as other tools, and the Tier Three component is Number Worlds. We have an additional math interventionist at McCourt this year, so we have two full-time math interventionists. Also, part of the program, you can see that last bullet, is filling gaps while continuing with grade-level standards. Alex is a practice platform, that students, there's expectations at each school for how many minutes a week students have to work on Alex, and that's hopefully, again, that's something that they take up to diagnostic assessment, and will personalize what their needs are, but the teacher can also go in and assign practice to things that they're teaching, or things that have been taught that their students still aren't showing
Bethany and I will share the current responses to improve student outcomes in ELA, Alto Elementary, and Shilto Middle. As Kathy said, although not listed here, we're back because we are able to meet regularly with the K to five elementary mapping teams. This year is our implementation of wonders in grades three and four. That includes 28 teachers implementing this new curriculum, a new instructional pathway, new assessments, and new rubrics. The exciting part, I think, and Tony and I were talking about this earlier, is that our report cards and the revisions in the report cards are aligned to the new assessments and rubrics. So when you see a report card at PF Norton that says, "Child comprehends grade-level text," and you see it at Garvin, and Ashton, and Community, and Cumberland Hill, there should be equity in all those scores, because we have a robust resource bank, and we also have rubrics that teachers are using. So that's very exciting, and that's happening K through four. Next year, and this year, first of all, this year we're mapping out the new ELA curriculum, wonders, so all of that will happen next year, so we'll be fully aligned. This year, I'm reviewing the constructs and wonders with kindergarten teachers for a variety of reasons. We tend to get more new K teachers at that grade level than other teachers, and also, we want to be clear that our instructional pathway in K can be vertically aligned to one, since they are the foundation. I'm able to meet this year with new teachers to review ELA curriculum. Tomorrow, I'm going to be meeting with three new K teachers, and we're going to go into a K room, and we're going to review the constructs for that grade level. We still have our two school-based coaches who are developing great expertise and working with teachers on pedagogy and practice. This year, the district was able to hire three new MLL interventionists, one at the elementary, one at the middle school, and one who split at the high school and elementary.
Our current middle school responses to improve student outcomes. First, we, last year, I met with the grade six, seven, eight mapping team, and we reviewed different resources in terms of which curriculum are we going to adopt in ELA, and they unanimously chose StudySync, which was great. So this year, I meet with them, all teachers in grade six, seven, and eight, about once a month, and we're intentionally mapping out and choosing which constructs we're going to use. We're not just taking the program and saying, "Here, teach it," we're looking at it, and we're deciding very deliberately which constructs we're going to be using. As far as social studies, Tony and I are taking a look at their assessments, we're auditing their assessments, and we're giving them feedback around design. Perhaps we will be considering new curricular resource for both middle schools in social studies. Our ELA Essentials Tier Two model is in place. We have a new ELA Essentials coach, and she helps teachers at both middle schools understand the curricular framework that we have in place for ELA Essentials, help them understand the framework, as well as work with teachers around pedagogy and practice. Finally, we have an additional McCourt interventionist for ELA.
Okay, so now we start to compare, as we've done in past years, how we fare with, proximity-wise, with districts that are close to us in Massachusetts. You also know, as part of the strategic plan, Dr. Thornton wanted us to have some goals as it relates to our performance in comparison to Massachusetts districts, and so Kathy's going to talk a little bit about that.
So this year, we compared ourselves to the districts that surround Rhode Island. In other years, we have compared to districts that have similar economically disadvantaged population, but again, we don't have that data this year. But you can see in the surrounding Mass districts, there was only one district that outperformed Cumberland in ELA. Five districts outperformed us last year. In math, there are two that outperformed us, and last year, there were four. Is this one too? So this, again, is the Massachusetts, so Deb and I went through all of the districts, regardless of the economically disadvantaged population, and Cumberland and ELA performed greater than 67% of Massachusetts districts, and in math, we performed better than 76% of districts.
Kathy, that's across all districts in Massachusetts? Yeah, that deserves a round of applause.
Actually, I think we actually included. Back, and we added the charter schools in, so that even included charter schools?
It does include charter schools? So, okay, so greater than 67% of all districts in Massachusetts, including charter schools, and 76%, wow.
Deb actually printed that out, and we hand-counted multiple times.
Yeah, awesome.
Okay, so at this point, we'll start talking about some more specificity around the Rycast outcomes in a little bit more depth. This slide represents the students who are not meeting expectations in our district in ELA in math. These are the numbers that you want to see, 10% or below, and so you'll see in ELA, it was 10% last year, and we still have 10% of the population not meeting expectations, so we're hovering around that point. I'd like to be a little bit below that, but there was no change there. In Massachusetts, in math, we reduced our population of students who are not meeting expectations by 4.6%, which is a really good thing for us to do. Okay, so there's a lot on this slide, I'll walk you through it slowly, but we basically have three subgroups that we wanted to show how they performed. Special education students in our district, the MLL population, and the economically disadvantaged. That last, economically disadvantaged, they did populate data, I just used the data that they had in the portal for this year, even though it's not as accurate as it normally would be. Next year's data will be more accurate. So if you look in the far right, our special ed population in ELA increased about 1.1% from last year. In math, we went up about 5.8%, which is statistically significant. Our Ls was virtually no change, minus .03% in ELA, so it relatively stayed the same. Our L performance in math increased by nearly 10%, 9.7%, which is again, statistically significant. Our economically disadvantaged in ELA went up about 1%, and then math went up about 8.2%, so you can start to see the trends. Overall, math, large gains, ELA relatively status quo.
So this is, since we began this, we were always asked to compare, or look at the scores versus BVP, because technically, it's another public school in our district. Let me just click down, so you can see, click down, Cumberland's on the left, BVP is on the right, starting from 2015 through 2022, and you can see, we're on an upward trajectory. I kind of like to ignore 2021, but now we're back on the rise again. And you can see, when we started in 2015, BVP was outperforming Cumberland, and that has changed, you know, you can see there's a significant difference in 2022, where 53% of students in Cumberland are proficient, whereas BVP, 28% of students are.
So here is our ELA comparison to BVP. As you can see, at one point, they were surpassing us, I think that was 2016, but we very quickly surpassed their performance in ELA. We stayed about the same, as you can see, compared to 2021, 2022, and you can see by this slide how they're declining.
How drastic the difference is? Is that what you?
I don't want to say that, thank you for saying that.
Can you go back to the previous slide? I just want to make sure I got those numbers right. 53% and 28%. 28, right? Okay, 28, yep. That's 25%. My math was up here. Yeah.
Okay, so...
Hold on, I'm still taking that in.
Okay, sure. Do you want me to go back?
There's more coming?
There's more, yeah.
Okay, all right. There's just a lot to take in, Tony.
It is, absolutely, yeah. Do you want to ask anything before we go on?
Well, you're going to have more details.
I am, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So, no worries. So a few years ago, I was at a meeting, the mayor had invited me to a meeting, Senator Pearson was there, members of the BVP administration were at the table, and one of the points of contention was that BVP in years past, their subgroups were outperforming Cumberland's subgroups. Not overall performance, but subgroups was the sort of default argument, and so Dr. Thornton was like, "Yeah, let's put it in, put it in, I want to see the data," right? So I'll start with the MLL population. BVP, Cumberland, comparison in math and ELA at the top. BVP was 11.9% proficient, their L population in math. In ELA, the double star, no data, means that less than 5% of their students registered on the scale as proficient, and so for, you know, discretionary purposes, they don't publish that data.
But, Mr. Damana, does that mean that the same, that all the students took the test?
Yeah, so their L population that took the test, less than 5% of those kids in the L students were proficient in ELA on the assessment. So 11% of their students, L population, 11.9% were proficient in math, but they didn't register on the scale in ELA. So it's no data in. And you can see our scores, 29.7 in math, and then in ELA, 21.7%. They also track MLLs that are three years exited, meaning what's the sustainability of their ability to maintain, you know, good standing in their academics, and so in math, BVP's three-year exited Ls scored 39.4%, and we, our math Ls, three years exited, scored 65.8%, which is significant, I thought, I was surprised to see that, happy to see that. ELA, 34.4%, and 52.6 of our Ls are proficient, maintaining, basically, when they're exited from L services, they're maintaining their ability to keep up with the rigor of the So the two stars data is supposed to ensure confidentiality, because greater than 95% of students did not meet expectations. That was the, that's the no data. I said it the opposite way, I said less than, yeah, less than 5%. So more subgroups. Our special education population in Cumberland outperformed BVP's in both math and ELA. Again, you're seeing no red... Again, you're seeing no registering on the map in ELA, and 7% in math. We were 11.8% in math, 9.6 in ELA. Economically disadvantaged, this is a big one. That comes up a lot. And so you'll see, again, a clean sweep of our performance there in ELA and math. Give you a second to absorb that.
Yeah, that is definitely one of the things that we hear often, is that Cumberland doesn't.
They do it better.
Yeah, for this particular subgroup.
Right.
But the answer is.
Not this year.
Not this year.
And so this last slide, I don't really, I don't really like or understand why. It's probably a federal government thing. I don't really know why they disaggregate the data for race and ethnicity, but this also came up in conversation. The reason why I don't understand why they disaggregate it is, is we don't teach our kids in a segregated manner, so I'm not sure why they take the data this way. But because this had come up in the past, I decided to illustrate the data. And again, you see a clean sweep, Asian population, Hispanic and African American, ELA in math, BVP versus our performance. And you can see there, I'll be quiet so you can kind of absorb the data there, but see that we outperformed them across the board there as well. Good? Okay. All right, so this is when we talk about population. And so I'm going to simplify it as best as.
Mr. Demana, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is obviously about Cumberland's RICAS scores, but you know, BVP is always just looming. I do have a question, though. Based on these subgroups, I have not seen, with the exception, what I see right here is African American ELA students, the 23.6. Is there any other subgroup that's not listed that you can, you identified in your data in which BVP outperformed Cumberland Public Schools?
No, no. No, Mr. Collins.
So we, so again, we surpassed them in every single category.
To my knowledge, yes.
Thank you.
Like, they have other subgroups, like homeless, you know, foster care, those types of subgroups. I don't get into that data, but these are the ones that have come up in conversation, and so the ones that rise to the top that we look into, there was, as you can see, it's a clean sweep. So population, you heard Kathy and Deb talk about population and that we test over 2,000 kids, and how we compare to districts, larger districts, in terms of proficiency. And so to simplify this slide, basically, if Little Compton were to have to make a 7.5% gain, and Cumberland were to make a 7.5% gain, if we both started at 50.5% and we wanted to get to 58%, Cumberland would have to move 154 students to achieve proficiency across the district versus Little Compton, 10 students. So it's essentially a 15 to 1 ratio of the amount of students that you have to move. Now, there are a lot of variables in that. And one of the, in my opinion, one of the biggest variables why I think larger districts have a hard time with sustaining proficiency, the larger you are, is because of the variables of, when you have lots of schools, you add many variables. You add more leadership, you have more teachers. And so there are many more systems that you need to have a handle on when you're releasing and doing things like curriculum implementation. Part of the success formula is synergy, right? You want synergy amongst all of the schools. And so that dilutes as you have more schools and grade levels to manage. And so I always like to put that in there, because I do think that, you know, performance should be looked at through a lot of different lenses, and it's not just to say, hey, this school has 80 students and they're 78% proficient. There's more to that story, right? Okay, so there's a lot on this slide, but I'll simplify it. Pre-pandemic, we were at 61% in ELA and 55% in math. Last year, we had predicted that we were going to hopefully see a 3% growth rate in ELA and a 3.5% growth rate in math, based on historical data on how our trends were. We know that during the pandemic in ELA, we lost about 10% proficiency, which was about 200 students that we lost to the pandemic in terms of proficient students in our district. And in math, we lost 14% of our students, which was about 280 kids, okay? Fast forward to the bottom, this year, our growth rate declined by a percent, and so we're behind the eight ball in terms of our four years to get back to where we want to be. And so we're at about 220 students now that need to get back to where we were pre-pandemic. Yet in math, the story is a little bit different. There was a 12% proficiency growth. It was a spike, so I'm sure Dr. Thornton will say, this is your line here, about you saying that, let me say, well, he wants me to say to everybody that he was right, he was half-right, and I was half-right. You know, we saw a slower trajectory in ELA, obviously, but a spike in math. We recovered 246 of the 280 students in math from the pandemic. Any questions on that? Yep.
Where did we fall in relation to this internal testing you had done pre-test? Because you had, in achievement and in these meetings, you'd given us an idea of what you think we're going to do. Where did we fall in comparison to your STAR testing?
STAR testing, you know, it was actually a mess, to be honest with you, Mr. Collins. I had a hard time this year with our data. Last year, at the, our end-of-the-year data, which Shannon populates, when she gave it to me last year, it was scary low. And so, in both, ELA and math. And so a lot of the predictive algorithms that I try to figure out and predict our standing were way off, because STAR data was way down in both. And so it was really hard to predict, so I kind of did a low, medium, and a high, and I was, I was still off. I was still, I was closer in ELA, because I was predicting a lower, a lower trajectory, and I don't think any of us predicted the surge that we saw in math, so.
So we did better than you predicted?
Technically speaking, yes. Not in ELA, but math.
Thank you.
So the question, Mr. Adams, is why in math?
If you think overall, that was the prediction for all students, if you look at any of the information coming out, that math would recover more quickly after the pandemic. I'm not quite sure why. Maybe because more isolated skills, but that, I think, was global, as you could see from the rankings, that in general, people recovered more in math. Also, we're not implementing any new math, we weren't implementing any new math curriculum. We've been using Eureka math for many, many years. But other than that, I know, you know, there's a lot of professional development and great teaching and work going on in ELA and math, but I don't know.
Well, I think you have to ground the conversation in growth. So we were 11th last year. We dipped by a point, and we're eighth this year. So we're growing. Our highest performance was in 2018, when we tied East Greenwich for fourth. So that's what we'd like to grow toward. The other thing, I think Kathy talked about, the Massachusetts slide, and in the neighboring communities, there was only one neighboring community this year that outperformed us, and last year, there were five. So even though the numbers look like we lost a point, when you put it all in context, we're still growing. And as Tony would say, we're certainly humbled by this in ELA, yet hopeful.
So Tier Two. As a committee, you've supported lots of resources for us over the years with regards to supporting our Tier Two services in the district. Tier Two is where a large population of students falls, the nearing proficiency students. And so those are the students that, you know, the needs are complex. There's a diverse need bank there, and it's where we need to diversify how we approach getting those kids to proficiency. And so, as you can see on the bottom, I just give you the number of students at each school. And so last year, we had 913 total students in the district that required Tier Two services, and we've reduced that number to 790 in math. In ELA, last year, we were at 770, and because of the slight regression in percentage points because of the population tested, we're now at around 184 total students requiring Tier Two. So the need is there. It's extremely important, and the better our systems get around Tier Two, we've got to continue to nosedive those. As those numbers go down, proficiency scores go up. And so, I, want me to pass it over to you for NGSA? We added, last year, we added NGSA Science Assessment data, and then there's just a few slides left on this.
So the NGSA, which is Next Generation Science Assessment, is giving to grade spans. So students are administered the test in grade five, grade eight, and grade 11. So the first slide is Cumberland's scores overall. Well, you can see grade five, you can see each individual school, grade five as a whole was 51% proficient, grade eight, 54%, and the high school, 53%, for an overall 53%. The next one is just grade five, and again, this only includes districts that test all three grade levels. I'm sorry, this is the wrong slide. Yes, this one is, hold on, I'm looking at the wrong one. This is just fifth. Yeah, now that I think, oh, all right, I'm sorry. This is overall. I changed the order of them, so I'm looking at fifth, thinking fifth grade. Overall, Cumberland was fifth compared to districts that test all three grade levels. I saw the fifth, and it made me think it was the elementary. The next slide is just elementary. So you can see Cumberland's a lot further down, because there are a lot of elementary schools, but not as many high schools. Some of the small elementary schools feed into one, you know, there might be three elementary districts that feed into high school, like Little Compton, I think they go to Portsmouth. At any rate, so this is all elementary, and again, it includes the very, very small schools and even schools. You can see the Compass School, New Shorm, I don't know, there might have been 20 people or something, but anyways, it includes everything. And then the next slide is middle school. And then the last one is high school. So overall, if you look at the district, it's comparing, it looks more comprehensive of the district as a whole, because we're comparing apples to apples.
That's all we have for you this evening.
Adam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Thornton.
I just want to say, I am truly encouraged by the results. It's truly a testament to, I think, the teachers, the admin team, this team in front of you right here doing fantastic work. People often ask, you know, what's the secret sauce? There's no secret sauce. It's hard work in avoiding the distractions that some districts get caught up in. So I think it's really just a great focus and great work. Thank you all.
Yeah, so if I, if I look back, you know, at all of the notes, and there's some key things I think that stand out. Okay, so we're fourth in the state for math, and we're eighth in the state for ELA. And I believe in your strategic plan, Mr. Demana, you have us being, becoming a top three district. So, so we're not too far away from that, but I want everyone to understand that the reason we, you know, Mr. Demana and his team can put a goal like that in front of themselves is because of their focus on data and being able to look at the data every day and make very smart decisions with our budget dollars. Being able to get a math interventionist at a middle school, because we know we need to move that school forward, or to get these coaches somewhere else, because we know we need to move that population forward, is a smart use of our limited dollars. You know, we're achieving all of this as the lowest-funded district in the state, which is ridiculous. I also just want a couple of other key points. We performed 67% better than all Massachusetts districts in ELA, right? Got that one right? And 76% better than all Massachusetts districts in math. Okay, I'm just saying these things in case you, you know, someone runs up to you and says, hey, how is, how is Cumberland doing in RICAS? Okay, fourth in the state for math, eighth in the state for ELA, 67% better than all Massachusetts districts, 76% better than all Massachusetts districts for math. We are increasing all of our special populations. And then I think the final thing here is Cumberland is continuing, and I'm going to use Mr. Demana's words, to do a clean sweep across BVP. We have spent many years with a lot of different things thrown at us about, could we be better? Why can't we be better? Oh, there's all these reasons why, this, that, and the other thing. And it is clear that even with this, even with looking at the same populations, the same subgroups, breaking it all down any which way that you can, that we are still significantly outperforming. And I think that's really important for school choice, for parents to think about where they want their kids to go, and how they want their kids to perform. We're building brand-new schools in Cumberland. We have amazing data around our proficiency and our focus on that. And the school of choice, the district, the school of choices should be the schools in Cumberland. There's, I don't know how, any other way you look at that. So just a, just a couple of tidbits for you all when you, you know, someone walks up to you on the street. Any other comments or questions from the school committee, Mr. Collins?
I have a few, but I'm just going to piggyback off what she'd have said about BVP. Let's not forget, charter schools were designed for underperforming school districts. The idea to give parents a choice, it makes sense in theory, okay? The money follows the student, even though we all know that's not the case, because it, you know, if you have four classes with 20 kids in it, and two kids from each class go to BVP, you still have to pay your teachers, you still have to pay national grid, or whatever they're called now, all right? The bills are still there. And we lose that state funding times eight children, so we're left with a budget gap. So we have a charter school in town that was designed to help underperforming school districts, even though, you know, clearly, in this case, what it appears to be showing with your data is that the public school system is now supplementing an underperforming school district. So, you know, it's also very important to understand that, you know, we're getting into finance later, that we're looking at a budget gap. This year alone, we're paying BVP $4 million, the approximate budget gap that we have to plug next year, when what the data clearly shows is that we are outperforming a district with limited means. They, we all know about the PPP money and all this other stuff. We are scrapping money together every budget season to get these results. Can you imagine the results we'd get if we were fully funded and we didn't have to pay them?
I wish we could all drop our microphones and just end the meeting right now. But, Mrs. Madus, did you want to? No? Because I don't even care about the rest of, no, I didn't say that. But I think, I think a rounding, round, rows of applause. Oh, Mr. Collins?
I do, too. It goes without, because we, these meetings, and I've sat through enough of these before, you know, we have the admin team, and, you know, it has, it goes without saying that, you know, there are teachers in this district who put this into action with, and it's not like normal years, like in 2018, which was a difficult, I mean, every year's a difficult year. Last year, any teacher will tell you, last year was like nothing. So to accomplish this, given what you dealt with last year in the classroom, is remarkable. So my hat goes out to you, but obviously, the teachers who are on the front lines and the support staff, and everything from, you know, the secretaries to the custodians who, you know, make it a good learning experience, so thank you.
Just really quick, wanted to echo my thanks also for all of the work that you do. My little Excel spreadsheet-loving heart loves the deep dive into the data, and so I just, to go that deep and to look that hard and to really bring out all the numbers to share, it's, thank you for all the, I know it's not easy. I know it can be. to share, it's, thank you for all the, I know it's not easy. I know it can be very overwhelming, I'm sure, and it's a lot of work. So thank you for all the man-hours that you put into this and woman-hours. And I would also echo what Mr. Collins said, that this is such a testament to the staff, the teachers, and the students themselves, because last year was not, not easy for anyone. So just thank you all.
Oh, Ms. Smith?
I'm actually just going to ask two quick questions. How does all the new curriculum that's being rolled out align to the new state mandates that we continuously hear that we have to fund now because it's being mandated different curriculum, but we're not having the funding come our way?
So we've been, like I said, using Eureka Math, K through eight, for several years. Eureka Math was considered high-quality from K to five, but not six to eight. So because of the state mandate, we had to change our curriculum. So we implemented Reveal Math this year, which is going well. But there is a little, there sometimes can be a dip when you're implementing a new curriculum. And we had great results with Eureka. So we're hoping we have the same great results with Reveal, but we are in a transition. So
So this journey began in 2018 with Tony's support when we chose a new ELA curriculum because the one we were using in K to two was broken. And we happened to choose Wonders. It was before they were rating curriculum, and it was before RYE mandated new curriculum. And Tony and I were talking about it. I think we chose well. And the secret sauce for us, and Bethany can attest to it in ELA, ELA is more complex than math because there are so many constructs to choose. So we spent, we spend a year mapping out the constructs, the instructional pathway, the assessments, the rubrics. Then we implement the following year. And there are still issues in implementation year, you know, confusion, questions, but that has served us very well. And we happened to choose an ELA curriculum that ended up being green go once, you know, the, the mandate was in place.
We chose Study Sync because that was a green go curriculum, and the curriculum that they're currently using is not approved by the state. So, and we're doing the same as, as elementary did, being very deliberate and intentional in deciding which constructs we're going to use. I do want to say that we still map out with the grade levels that implement so we can problem, problem solve real time with the implementation that they're, that they're doing. And we'll do that next year with grade six through eight.
And the last question I have then is, will you be putting this presentation on the website and will it be mentioned in your weekly update, Dr. Thornton?
It's a yes to both. One other note, just, I shared the presentation with all of the committee members. There are hidden slides that we didn't show of other data, like school data, comparisons on how our grade levels ranked in comparison to, let's say, third grade in Cumberland versus the entire state, third grades. So there's other data in there. It's data overload, but it is there for you to look at. We just didn't show it this evening. Okay?
All right. Well, again, thank you for your work in putting this together and all the work you do all year to get us to this point. We did a round of applause. I'm doing it again. Okay, now we have to move on to the rest of our agenda. So next is the reports of standing committees. Fiscal management subcommittee update, Mr. Collins.
The thing everybody came for. All right. Fiscal managed subcommittee met this evening. We have fourteen resolutions before the committee. We had payment of the bills. One thing that comes out of the payment of bills, though, is we're paying thirty-two thousand dollars to see, for first, for fall semester, we're paying thirty-two thousand dollars to CCRI for a dual enrollment program that started a few years ago. The state funded that for the first two years, but now as we increase, we're left on the hook. So we're looking at, if this trend continues, sixty-four thousand dollars for the entire year for dual enrollment. The irony is that the students that are in dual enrollment right now, if they, when they graduate, next year, community college will be free. So, you know, this is something I asked Mr. Prignano about that during fiscal subcommittee. That's, it comes from the state level, level. It would require legislation to fund that. And I think that would be appropriate considering if these kids just, we're trying to get these kids college-ready and give them an opportunity especially to get college credits. If they just waited an extra year, they would have already gotten them for free. So it seems kind of silly that we're, the district is paying for something that would be free a year or two for now. So that was just, that's just my opinion on it. That's the same thing I did in fiscal subcommittee. But resolutions, bills, good times.
Next, the policy and procedures subcommittee update. I know it did not meet this week. That's Mr. Fiorello's committee. I don't think we have any update. Or do we?
No, there's no update. We will have the next meeting in January.
Achievement and communication subcommittee update. We, we did not meet, but we will be meeting December twentieth, I think. And next, district health and wellness subcommittee update. Someone else you?
Our next meeting is in January.
All right, the next item on the agenda is comments from the public. If anyone from the public would like to speak, you can come up to the microphone, state your name and your address.
Good evening. Lisa Bolio, Heinz Road, Cumberland. So first, I was really wishing Mr. Demonic was here tonight because it's always nice to give a proper send-off and sometimes a little proper burn. But if he's watching, I'm sure he, he'll enjoy this. So I met Mr. Demonic when he would attend the school committee meetings before he was a member. And he would sit in the back row and kind of yell stuff at us. And it wasn't always a fun experience, but you knew he meant it. And he was passionate about the school district. And at that time, we weren't doing so well. And when he got on the school committee, you kind of wondered what to do with him because, you know, was he going to throw rocks at us like he did at the school committee meetings when he was a, an attendee? And he didn't. He contributed. And he contributed very positively and favorably and passionately. And he, we put him on as the finance chair, and that certainly was a little risk. But he did his homework and he came prepared. And he knew his stuff. And he advocated for our community in, in his own special way. And he was prickly, and he was rough, and, but he was soft on the inside. And you knew he meant really well. And, you know, if you think about some of the things that he, he did, he advocated strongly for school building improvements, and he advocated strongly for student achievement. He was instrumental in bringing the lacrosse programs funding to the district so that they became like a fully acclimated program. And he brought girls hockey. It was those little unique things that made him a special person. Well, you know, crunchy on the outside, soft and soft on the inside. So, you know, over twelve years, he, he did big things in town. And we do respect and appreciate his contributions, even though we may not have always agreed with some of them. And then to the, to the district on its achievement, I think it's remarkable and wonderful, and you should all be so tremendously proud of what you've done. And it was great to see Deb Root here. She's a gift, you know, we, we all know that. And the teachers and faculty and the contributions that you've had to do and be so dedicated year after year while having rocks thrown at you sometimes, you know, trying to get yourself from here to there. So thank you very much from top to bottom as to, you know, who does what. It's a lot of work. Continuous improvement is a really hard thing. You should be very proud. And I imagine, Dr. Thornton, you're chasing CCONC, and I bet you'll pass them soon. And I'll end it with, you know, Mr. Demana and BF Norton School came at one point to give us, you know, some words on how their school was improving. And it was no excuses, only results, right? And I think that has really been kind of what's been such a motto for the district. And you've done great things. So congratulations.
Thank you, Councilor Bolio. President Kinch?
Good evening, members of the committee. And I would like to say nicely done, Councilor Bolio. And I think there is a, a lot of people, most recently, this school committee, the faculty, staff of this school that made those achievements possible. So I just don't want to ignore Ms. Bolio's contribution when she served on this committee about moving that forward. So like I said, it, you showed today, it's, it's quite a group effort, and congratulations. I also want to congratulate or say a couple of nice things about Paul Demonic. When I got elected in 2018, I called him several times trying to get up to date on school issues and, and things of that nature involving schools. And Paul, I know you're watching. I, I just want to thank you for that, and I want to thank you for your friendship. Couple of things I just want to, to mention. First, I do want to congratulate while I was here, Becky Cameron for his gold ticket winner, Feinstein winner from community school. And of course, I want to thank the district's education support professional, Kelly McPherson. Congratulations, I didn't get to see you before you left. Next, I do, I do want to reiterate what the chairwoman said about the school committee appointment. We are going to be hopefully right on target. I just want to maybe leave that date of one, four, right here. We just don't know yet if we're going to be able to, but definitely by the second. Okay? I know that was the date put out, but I just want to leave a little wiggle room on that. But it's definitely by July, excuse me, December twenty-sixth to get the applications in. And I have, oh, I also want to, because BF Norton's on Broad Street, the revitalization of Broad Street is having a meeting on Monday, six o'clock. That's twelve, twelve, at the filibuster club. So if anybody is interested going down there, they'll, we'll get an update on, you know, completion dates and so forth of Broad Street, which we know is important to BF Norton. And the last, I'm going to give these to you. Doctor, I have two projects here from the Cumberland Land Trust. I'm active attending their meetings. And I think they, you had one prior that we could use in elementary and/or the middle school about certain animals. One's an owl project, one's a beaver project. So I'm going to give you those and see if they could squeeze those into the curriculum a little, little different, maybe broaden in that particular class. So thank you, and again, thank you for your success.
Thank you, President Kinch. Any other comments from the public? All right. Thank you. Seeing none, we will move into new business. So first item on the agenda is update on the Alphabet Education Before and After School Program. Welcome back.
So thank you guys for having us back. And I'm truly humbled to be a part of this meeting tonight. You know, normally I sit through many of these, but, you know, to sit through what I just experienced was profound for many reasons. One is, as a former school committee member, I know how diligent and all that information that gets brought to us all the time and how wonderful that impact was. But as a partner in Cumberland, I can truly see the impact as I go from your schools day by day, and the children, and the, you know, the faculty, the level of partnership, the level of detail. And I travel across the country. And this by far was one of my most favorite meetings. So the, the education team should be commended, and I'm certainly proud to be a part of this district. So my, although my presentation isn't as equal, I did try to provide you guys with some great data on Alphabet. I gave you an impact report, which just shows again, the impact we're making here in Cumberland schools from the enrollment. As I came to you before, we had mentioned we had a waitlist that was, you know, relatively sizable in the early parts of the school year. We're down to about seven now. That's basically at community school, and that's purely because of space. And again, you know, some minor staffing pieces. But we're confident that, you know, once we hit the start of the year, we'll be able to open that up. We have extended our scholarship offerings this year. We have five students that we're fully supporting from Alphabet that are attending for a variety of different reasons. You know, we say scholarships, but honestly, they're broad. It's, it could be financial, it could be emotional, it could be momentary. So we've certainly been open to that and working with the schools too on that, as well as ensuring that the funding, if folks need it there. I included a bunch of information in here because I know through my times with you guys, there's been questions around how we do our pricing, what it looks year over year. It's all in here for you as a quick reference guide so that you can see it. I also put in here our staffing pieces so that you have that data and information as that's migrated and grown. And then the piece, as you guys can see, and I'm proud of, you were our first contract here for Alphabet. And from there, we've grown, and that's because of the opportunities that we've had. So hopefully this will give you some data, and I'll continue to provide this to you. As I know, when a family calls, having that information is available. And then the other piece I wanted to share with you too, which is in your packets, is just what we're doing curriculum-wise. The two pieces that we focus on that are a big piece of what we do in the after-school is our enrichment. So this gives you an idea of what our scope looks like for the school year, as well as the social-emotional learning pieces. So just threw a couple of things in there. And then our kids made some really cute art activities, thank you cards. And I just, you know, as, as a person, sometimes, you know, that was just, I, they made them today for a variety of different reasons, and I wanted to share those with you as well. So we truly do thank you. I know I've only been here about six or seven months, but it's really been a great opportunity. And I'm glad to keep coming back as you guys need me to. Questions?
Yes.
Ms. Jennings, thank you very much. You know, I, I think you understand, I was unaware you were on a school committee at one point, but you, you understand that the nature is, people constantly come at you with different issues or whatever. And, you know, one of the challenges, I think, in anybody who's potentially considering joining the school committee, is you can never provide everybody with, with a positive answer. You will inevitably anger people. So, you know, with the start of the year, Alphabet, the enrollment was crazy. I can, I can say, Ms. Jennings, your communication has been excellent, even when you, you couldn't give people what they wanted necessarily. You, you listened to them and you, and quite frankly, sometimes you were able to make accommodations for people. I did say when we were walking in here, you know, at the beginning of the year, it was like, you get all these emails upset about buses, Alphabet. I don't, I haven't received an Alf, I could be the only one. I haven't received an Alphabet complaint since we last communicated at the beginning of the school year. So whatever you're doing, people appear to be happy. So thank you very much. And thank you very much for all, what you do for the students at Cumberland. And thank you for the artwork. Actually, I do save this stuff. I, I'm sentimental, so.
It's one of those things that every now and again, we all have our days in our office. You put it there and you look up and we're reminded, you know. That's why we're here.
That's great. Thank you.
Yes, but I appreciate that.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I chair the Health and Wellness Committee, and one of our big social, one of our big focuses right now is the castle standards and social-emotional learning. And so it's really encouraging to hear, like, I love seeing that you are doing stuff specifically with SEL.
Absolutely. And I just gave you guys a brief overview, but if you wanted a scope and sequence to see, just let us know. It's been a big piece as we came back from the pandemic and really just focusing on all those different levels of needs. And it's a great program, but I'm always happy to share. But thank you. Well, I appreciate it and thank you guys. And again, as I agree, you can't always make every single person happy, but if we're here, we're communicating. That's the most effective approach. But I'm always here as a resource, and I hope you have me back again sometime in the spring, summer months, okay? Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
Yes, we appreciate you as well.
The next item on the agenda is discussion and revote to approve snow day virtual instruction day plan. Dr. Thornton?
Chair, I can start, and Mr. Demana is also here to respond. With RYE, should a district want the option to have a virtual snow day? They had to complete a pretty comprehensive application. We have the application in, and Tony can certainly talk about what's in it. But I wanted you to know, from my perspective, I'm a little, I think, more geared towards, if we have that one or two snow days, I would rather have them be snow days for kids and come into school later. Because I think the day's much more, just, just a more impactful day being in person. But if we have, you know, day being in person. But if we have, you know, two, three, four, five, now we, you know, might have to go virtual. So, we had to submit by a certain date. So, I wanted to get it in in case we have that protracted snow year. So, Tony, any, any thoughts?
You've covered it all. Really, the big thing is, is we have to have a minimum of three hours of synchronous instruction in order to get approved. It's a 20-plus page plan. It's not really worth getting into the details, but essentially, we've, we've got to be able to conduct business with our current curriculum so we don't miss a beat in order for it to count as a school day. Yes?
Mr. Collins and then Mr. Rogalski.
There were a couple of things. I read through it. Help me understand. So, do we have provisions in this virtual plan? Because inevitably, in Cumberland, the power will go out. There's something in there for teachers. What if we have a snow day, but there's no power, and the kids don't have internet access? And/or a teacher in Pasco, their power's out, and they can't do the synchronous learning? Is there, is there a stipulation in there? Because that inevitably does happen in Cumberland regularly, especially in a really high wind nor easter type situation.
Yeah, we would collaborate with Mike to see if there's anything, you know, that we could do. And we, we think we have good systems in place, but certainly, there are extenuating circumstances where we may not be able to do that. And then what Dr. Thornton would probably do is it would be within his right to just, perhaps just have a regular snow day and not, not call a virtual learning day.
To your point, that is one of the reasons why I'm a fan of in-person because there are a lot of variables that do inevitably make it. So, some folks can get online, some folks can't get online. That's why I think we'd rather have folks come in.
So, you're, RIDE is requiring that you do this. Is that what you're saying? Or is this something you're just being proactive with this?
No, they're saying submit a plan. Should you want to exercise the ability to do a virtual day, you must have a plan approved by RIDE. It's kind of what happened before the pandemic. RIDE had districts do this, but at that point, I don't believe anyone was approved pre-pandemic. Now, this is post-pandemic, and, you know, I'm not sure yet who's been approved, but they wanted us to submit this month to have a chance to do it.
I do one question. I think you can answer. The plan you submitted, has the CTA been consulted on this? Are there any labor issues?
Yes. Kerry Carlson signed the agreement, I believe, yesterday. And then just one other note, with our calendar the way it is, getting out pretty late this year, if we don't submit a plan, then Dr. Thornton has no option to even, you know, call a virtual day to kind of save us from maybe getting out in July or whatever. We don't, we never know the condition. So, I felt it was best to actually submit the plan.
So, let's see, discussion and revote to approve the snow day plan. So, you need the school committee to approve this so that you can submit it?
Yes.
So, pleasure of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second by Ms. Smith? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is discussion and revote on the CTA memo of agreement, MOA, on parent-teacher conferences. So, do you want to?
Chair, per our discussion and exec, I'd recommend approval.
Yeah, we can explain it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogalski, and second for discussion.
Yeah, just want to add, anytime, you know, if there's an MOA where administration and the collective bargaining unit is in agreement, I think this is, you know, there's a consensus. So, yeah, I went through it, and it was explained to us adequately in executive session, and I'm in support of this.
Yeah. And Ms. Smith?
Yes, I just wanted to reference that this is really going to help take care of all the concerns raised over the past few weeks as well from many parents, excuse me, timing for when they're in work and not being able to get into the schools in time, or not having enough timing and understanding of what will happen for parent-teacher conferences. So, this will help alleviate a lot of the concerns that the parents raised. And I think it's great that we were able to come together as a team to make that happen.
Yeah. And specifically, this is impacting at the high school level and ensuring that we have one evening for parent-teacher conferences in addition to the daytime conference. And we did, you know, receive a lot of feedback from parents, like Ms. Smith has said. And so, this is good that we've come to an agreement for moving forward. Okay, so, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero. The next item on the agenda is discussion and revote to approve the 2023 Cumberland School Committee meeting schedule. This has been shared with all the committee members. There are some months for a variety of reasons where it's not always the second and the fourth Thursday, but it's the pleasure of the committee. Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve, second by Mrs. Rogalski. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero. The next item on the agenda is discussion and revote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the 2023, 22, 2023 school year. Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith and Mrs. Rogalski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero. And now our favorite part of the evening, discussion and revote to approve. Well, we have two different ones. We have an amended resolution, and then we have our other resolutions. Mr. Collins?
Good evening, Madam Chair, and good evening, fellow committee members. So, we have the first two resolutions. Let me just pull up my notes from fiscal. Were, they were amended resolutions from the previous meeting, but SEPR dash 02 2022 dash 14A and 131A. Both of these were tabled during fiscal subcommittee. There was some lack of clarity around the funding for these things. This is some paperwork-type stuff, and we're going to push that off to the next meeting. So, that was tabled during fiscal subcommittee, and I would move the full committee to table it at this meeting.
Okay, so, Mr. Collins makes a motion to table the approval of these amended resolutions, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero to table the amended resolutions. Next is the discussion and revote to approve resolutions.
Okay, so, in addition to the amended resolutions, now we have 12 resolutions, SC dash 12 dash 2022 dash 137 through 148, I'm sorry, 148, all of which passed fiscal management subcommittee two to zero, and I would move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve resolutions 137 to 148. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? They pass four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Collins. And one more thing, discussion and revote to approve payment of bills.
And we have payment of the bills in the amount of $2,496,744.04. The payment of bills passed fiscal management subcommittee two to zero, and I would move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve payment of bills. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogalski. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero. Next item on the agenda is school committee comments, school liaison reports. Any comments from the school committee? Ms. Smith?
I guess we should just send out the congratulatory to the North Cumberland Middle School soccer team. I believe, Dr. Thornton, you may have some words on that too. But congratulations. It was wonderful to see that and really proud of our teams. It seems that every time we come into a meeting, we have yet another team to celebrate. And on top of that, you know, the RIDE cast, so kudos to everyone involved. And I also wanted to wish everybody a very nice, happy holiday season. We here at the school committee will not be back until January, or scheduled to be back in January. And hopefully, everybody has a wonderful season, and we all stay safe and healthy.
Just a reminder, you could be back with us in January, too. Just submit your letter of interest to the town clerk by December 26. And there's a seat waiting for you right up here on the stage. So, we are wishing all of you a happy and safe holiday season, and we will see you in January, hopefully with one more. I know we have a little bit more to do. Next, on the agenda is vote to go into executive session, but we do not have that tonight. Okay, Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? We are adjourned. It passes four to zero. We're adjourned at 8:50 PM. Thank you, everyone.